So I'm going to call the August 22nd, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. Selectman Pippin has agreed to run this evening's meeting. I am at home, a little under the weather. I'm going to stay remote participation and I will be voting, but I'm going to have Peter take over from here if he does not mind.
Okay, thanks Ruth.
Thank you.
So I think we will start with other business. We have a, what is it, a 6:30 appointment, so we'll get through as much of the meeting as we can until that comes. So I will take a motion to vote to approve the FY 2020, 2022 and 2023 weekly warrants in the amount of $1,000 and $1,555, 220, sorry, $155, 223.02 dollars respectively.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, Ruth Yule, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll take a motion to vote to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268a of the general laws, the contracts and the amounts for the individuals listed below contained within the 81122 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Ruth?
Aye.
I'll take a motion to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268a of the general laws, the contracts and amounts for the individuals listed below contained within the 81822 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approve the minutes for the Selectmen's August 8, 2022 open meeting.
So moved?
Second.
I think I heard her second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Take a motion to approve and sign the engagement letter from Powers &amp; Sullivan LLC to authorize counseling services, oh sorry, consulting services related to the new GASB 87 standards required as part of the town fiscal year 2022 audit.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ruth?
I voted, I hope you can hear me.
Okay, sorry. I'll take a motion to approve and sign the engagement letter for the Clifton Larson Allen LLP for the town's fiscal year 2022 audit.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll take a motion to consider a request to transfer, oh, sorry, I'm going to read this. One Middle Road motion. I will entertain a motion to approve a written request for the transfer of all interests in the leasehold for the property at One Middle Road, MAP 108, Lot 43, from the Dorothea R. Wendell Exemption Trust, H. Wendell Jr., and T. McKenzie Trust to Harlan LP Wendell Jr. and further that nothing in this approval is intended to convey or imply any right, title, or interest in the subject property or any portion thereof that was not already held by the Dorothea R. Wendell Exemption Trust.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll take a motion for 159 Canomo Point Road. I will entertain a motion to approve a written request for the transfer of all interests in the leasehold for the property at 159 Canomo Point Road, MAP 108, Lot 38, from Dorothea R. Wendell Exemption Trust, H. Wendell Jr., and T. McKenzie trustees to Harlan LP Wendell Jr. and further that nothing in this approval is intended to convey or imply any right, title, or interest in the subject property or any portion thereof that was not already held by the Dorothea R. Wendell Trust Exemption Trust.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Let's come back to that next idol, item. Consider Robin Cantor's request, a motion to consider Robin Cantor's request to appoint Carmen Emery to a three-year term on the Essex Cultural Council ending 6/30/2025.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, well, we have time, do we? Yeah, we have plenty of time. Should we discuss then the speed limit on Apple, at Southern Ave by Apple Street? Can we reduce it down to 65?
Sure, I can, I can talk about that. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, we did contact Mass DOT and the District Highway Director indicated that in fact, there are what are called special speed regulations in force on every street, or every major street in the town of Essex. These came about in Essex in 1968 because a program known as the Chapter 90 program, which is state money that helps fund road repairs and improvements, required all the towns to register their speed regulations with the state, and they've been set that way ever since. Now, with respect to Southern Avenue, flipping to that, there's Southern Avenue northbound, this is on Page 2, and the board has a copy of it. So that's what, what comes from Manchester and goes towards downtown Essex, and then they have Southern Avenue southbound, which of course goes from 133 towards Manchester. So if we start in the southbound one, excuse me, it looks like it's 30 miles per hour for about a quarter mile, and then it's 35 for another little bit over a half mile, and that's where it jumps up to 40. And I think these are the three zones that the board was talking about at the last meeting. The gentleman who came in to discuss this and to ask about this was asking to take the 30 and the 35 and make them 25 miles per hour all the way out until it becomes 40. The issue with that is, if the town does want to do that, Mass DOT would have to approve them. Now, the District Highway Director has indicated, he says that simply changing the signs would not be expected to achieve meaningful results, rather it would likely just increase the number of operators who are violating the posted speed limits. Mass DOT has been focusing on and developing a safe, a safe systems approach, part of which is aimed at establishing target speeds in roadways and then introducing roadway features that induce the necessary behavioral changes in drivers that will result in operating speeds that more closely match the target speed. Now, if you recall, this is something that we tried out by Farnham's and it worked well. Mass DOT expanded the size of the shoulder so people could park, but of course, that decreased the width of the traveled way, and in fact, people did slow down in that area. So it's a good example of what we've done in Essex. He says this can be challenging on some roadways such as Southern Avenue, where horizontal and vertical geometry of the existing roadway are essentially straight and flat for long segments. Yes, going out towards Manchester, that's the case, but in the area that we're talking about, there are turns and there's certainly a hill, which is part of the problem, this is kind of a blind hill there.
Brendan, did this person come and look? Did he, is he writing this from what? From what experience?
I don't think so. This is the District Highway Director and he's been really tied up with some alternative transportation plans for the Orange Line and Green Line.
Okay.
Situation. So no, I don't think he's looked closely, but what he mentions is that he put me in touch with the traffic operations engineer. What I'm going to recommend is that I get in touch with the engineer, perhaps he or his representative come out. We could go to the gentleman who indicated the issues that, that he sees, and perhaps they can either come up with ideas that would slow traffic, or in this case, maybe even agree that what's posted in this special, from the special speed regulations is perhaps a bit much for that particular area. So I'm happy to set that up if that's how the board wants to proceed.
Sure, I, I, just for clarification, so this email to you was in response to the fact that we're interested in reducing the speed, not that we want to reduce the speed, and he was...
Correct, yes.
Okay, so there's still some, this was not his definitive answer. There's room to, for them to negotiate and to reconsider.
There is. Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Sure, yeah, so there's room for negotiation here as to whether or not the speed limit can be changed.
Yes, I would say so, and I think, as to Guy's point, I think it will involve bringing our personnel so they can better appreciate the situation.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Ruth, are you on? Do you, do you concur?
I agree, yes.
Okay, so...
All right, I'll let you, I'll let everybody know when we set that up, so in case you're around and you want to see it.
Okay, thanks Brendan. It's hard looking at the screen and talking and all that, but whatever, should have sat over there. Okay. Is there, yeah, is there anybody here for licenses that, okay, so we'll do the licenses Annual weekday entertainment license. I'll entertain a motion for the Historic, Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum, 66 Main Street, to have amplified talk slash music indoors at the Waterline Center. Is there a comment on that?
So Peter, I do have a comment. I'm happy to see this on the agenda, and I think it's, will be a great thing for the Shipbuilding Museum. My only comment is I would like to make sure that the actual license itself does notate that it's indoors with doors and windows shut. That's been historically what we've requested for all indoor, annual amplified.
Yes, good point. And this is for any weekday, any number of events, correct?
That's correct. It's an annual, so it just doesn't include Sunday.
Yep. So I'll take a motion to allow the annual weekday entertainment license for the Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum.
So long as the...
Yeah, so long as it, it's indoors always and the doors and windows are closed primarily.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, one day wine and malt licenses. Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum, Katie Montgomery, for use on Wednesday, September 14th. Can I do these all at once? Are there a bunch of them?
Yeah, you can do them all at once, but if there are questions from any of the board members after you entertain that motion, then you can talk about any circumstances they have questions on before the vote occurs.
Okay, they're all, let's see. September 14th, we're looking at the hours between 7 and 8, within the confines of the Waterline Center at 66 Main. Okay, there's also one for September 27th, hours of 7 and 8, inside the Waterline Center. October 4th, hours 7 to 8, within the Waterline Center.
Well, I have a question, Pam. The ones that are listed for the Waterline Center, were those put on there just in case the board did not want to grant the annual license? Because if that's the case, then you don't need to vote on the ones that are in the Waterline Center, because you've, you've already approved the annual license in that location.
BZ, these are one day wine and malts.
These are wine and malts.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong, okay, got it.
Okay, so I'll continue on, October 15th, oh, sorry, let's see, October 22nd, which the hours are different, it's 6 to 8, as opposed to 7 to 8, within the confines of the Waterline Center. October 15th, between 2 and 8, within the Waterline Center. November 5th, from 1 to 6, within the Waterline Center. And that's it for them, yeah.
So I would so move.
Second.
But I do have a question, a couple of questions.
Sure.
So when you have multiple applications, is there a maximum number of applications that would, would require you to seek an annual?
They can get up to 30 per year, Guy.
To 30.
And what is the Waterline Center? Is that a building or is that an area?
Building. That's a building.
It is?
Yeah.
So this is within the confines...
Of a building.
Of a building.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I have no more questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, sorry. You got it, you got it, Ruth?
Pardon?
Hey, morning. Did I vote?
Sorry, Peter.
Yeah, I thought I did, aye. I didn't.
And Ruth, was aye?
I wasn't aye, yes.
So now we move on to...
WBC?
Yes, Cox Reservation, but these are all different, so we'll do them one by one. I'll take a motion for BWBC LLC, DBA Bentwater Brewing Company, Aaron Reams, for use on Saturday, September 17, 2022, between the hours of 11:30 and 2:30 PM, within the confines of the Cox Reservation at 82 Eastern Ave.
So moved?
Second.
My comment is that these are outside, but my understanding is they're acoustic, correct?
Right now, it's still talking about wine and malt.
We're still talking about wine and malt.
All right, so moved, second.
Yes.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
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 A motion to allow Cape Ban Chamber of Commerce Clam Fest Ken Rio for use on Saturday, October 22nd, 2022, between the hours of 11:00 AM, 4:00 PM, within the confines of Memorial Park at 30 Martin Street. Vote to waive the fee.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Well, I do have a question, what does, I'm not, what does the fee involve? And what are we waiving?
I don't know, how much is that Brendan or Pam?
It's, Pam, it's, it's 50, isn't it? Or 25? It's not a lot.
Okay.
Okay, I have no further questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion for Cape Ban Chamber of Commerce Clam Fest Rain Date, Ken Rio for use of, on Sunday, October 23rd, 2022, between the hours of 11 and 4:00 PM, within the confines of Memorial Park at 30 Martin Street. Vote to waive the fee.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion for Cape Ban Chamber of Commerce Clam Fest Rain Date, Ken Rio for use of, on Sunday, October 23rd, 2022, between the hours of 11 and 4:00 PM, within the confines of Memorial Park at 30 Martin Street. Vote to waive the fee.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, back to one day entertainment licenses now. Okay, a motion to allow Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., Jim Runwill, Jane Runwill, for use on Saturday, September 17, between the hours of 11:30 AM and 2:30 PM, within the confines of the Cox Reservation at 82 Eastern Ave, four-person, unamplified band playing outdoors.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 A motion for one day entertainment license to be granted to Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum, Katie Montgomery, for use on Sunday, October 2nd, museum on Main Street events between the hours of 10:00 AM and 12:00 PM, within the confines of the Waterline Center on 66 Main Street, amplified speech.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain.
One day entertainment license.
Well, I do have a question, well, just to confirm, yeah. Again, this is an indoor...
Indoor.
...venue.
Yes.
So we should add...
Doors and windows?
Yeah.
Okay, should we make that motion? Will that change anything for you, Ruth?
Yeah, I have a question on that one. It says within the Waterline Center, but Pam, that doesn't necessarily mean it's indoors, correct? Isn't the Waterline Center in, internal, external, like, isn't it both? Because we've had these before, where I assumed that when it said Waterline Center, I thought they were always indoors, but they were not. So can we just clarify that?
Yeah, that, that's the question I asked before, that was the Waterline Center...
The event may be outside, but the, the amplification is indoors?
I think there is. Yes, previously, when I've submitted paperwork that said Waterline Center, our intention is that it's, anything amplified is inside the building that's labeled Waterline Center, and the doors and windows are closed. But it's been changed in the past to Shipyard after it's been submitted, because I think there was some confusion about which areas were called what.
Okay, so Natasha, so this one is actually inside the building?
Yes, it's a, it's a talk in front of a small group of people.
Oh, okay, then I'd like to change my vote. Instead of abstain, I would like to vote in favor of, since it's indoors.
Thank you, and Waterline Center will always be indoors in the building, and the Shipyard will always be, will be outdoors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for a one day entertainment license, Cape Ban Chamber of Commerce Clam Fest, Ken Rio for use on Saturday, October 22nd, 2022, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM, within the confines of Memorial Park at 30 Martin Street. Clam chowder competition, a couple of local bands, indoor background music from Essex Radio. Vote to waive the fee.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
So I have a question, so this is amplified?
Yes.
So what makes this different?
Town benefit, town, anybody, it's open to the public?
Yeah, it's a community event.
Yeah. All those in favor?
So there is, we, as with the, the police...
Police car show.
That, that's the same sort of waiver...
Yes.
...that, that we've established in both.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah. Know what this is, yeah. I'll entertain a motion for a one day entertainment license, Cape Ban Chamber of Commerce Clam Fest Rain Date, Ken Rio for use on Sunday, October 23rd, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM, within the confines of Memorial Park at 30 Martin Street. Clam chowder competition, a couple of local bands, and/or background music from Essex Radio. Vote to waive the fee.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, let's, Brendan, do you want to start?
I think it's important that you actually read that notice, which is the next item down.
Oh, okay. The Select, oh yes, the Selectmen will meet jointly within the, with the Planning Board on Monday, September 12th, 2022, at 6:45 PM, on the third floor of Town Hall to consider nominations for and to vote with the remaining members of the Planning Board on appointing a successor to Wesley Burnham, who resigned from the Planning Board effective August 18, 2022, all in accordance with Section 11 of Chapter 41 of the general laws.
Thank you for doing that. The statute requires that a, a one week notice be given, so that was posted on your agenda as public notice, and now it's been read aloud, so.
Okay, I was going to do it at the end before it's a public...
Okay, yeah.
But this is good to get out there.
So Brendan, the next, the next item under reminders, about the Chamber, the next Chamber of Commerce meeting taking place Wednesday, the 24th, and you've said that you won't be able to attend that, and I had planned to attend. Peter, you also?
I was considering, yeah, I can.
So you, you, you mentioned that you didn't feel that there was that much that, that needed to be presented by the town to the chamber, just the two items basically, correct?
Yeah, and there might be questions on like, general initiatives and projects that are going on within the town, but you'll probably be able to field those as they come. I think the main thrust of it will be an update on what the, the lighting grant entails, and the town planner has provided a fact sheet on that that I can send out to all three of you, because that's what you would read from.
Okay, great, great.
And with respect to zoning, really, I mean, we've completed phase one, reports on the website, and until we get the second grant...
And could I ask a favor of you, is just, just send out to the three of us, or at least to Peter and me, just a, a very short summary of where we stand, what's, what, what the, what status is?
Sure, no problem. So I'll send you the fact sheet and a, and a zoning update.
Right, thank you.
No problem.
Got three, three minutes, can you do anything in three minutes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the Economic Development Committee met recently, it was August 11th, and the, the major discussion there was making sure that the board considered a range of articles for the fall town meeting with respect to lighting and other improvements, as well as the article for the, the sale of, of the smaller parcels on Gregory Island. I can get into, I, I have put those on the town meeting draft topic list, so I think we can hit those as we go there. With respect to the Strategic Planning Committee, the big news there is that on October 6th at 7 o'clock in Town Hall, and televised, and interactive by 6023 Studios, the draft update of the plan, strategic plan that covered 2015 to 2020, will be discussed. The Strategic Planning Committee has been working diligently to update the plan, and just like the adoption of the first plan, they intend to put the plan out for public review, and then hear commentary and, and take questions on October 6th. So that's moving along well, and I think we've added that to your reminders. Town meeting topics will be a longer discussion. I think, I think we can handle the last three after you, after you handle the Board of Public Works topic.
Okay, thanks Brendan. All right, why don't we get to the Public Works if...
So how many people would just speak?
Who's here, yeah? How many members of the Public Works want to come up here?
Three or four members just speak. Okay, so you've got Mel to come up to the table, we've got two extra microphones, we have one extra microphone here, three people on the table.
Brendan, do you want to start off the discussion and just give some back... Brendan, do you want to start off the discussion, um, and just give some background of where we're at?
Certainly, certainly. So as everybody knows, and if there's anyone joining us that hasn't, um, heard about this topic yet, the town has a solid waste disposal contract with a company called Covanta. We've had that for, um, the last 10 years, and we had another contract with them before that. That contract, which has very favorable fees, expires at the end of this calendar year. Excuse me. Since that's the case, another solution needs to be put in place. The options include continuing to run the transfer station or going to curbside. And the town has done both of those things in its history. Um, no matter which is decided upon, we know that there'll be a sharp increase in cost because the rates are so favorable in the current Covanta contract. So, uh, looking at um, a company known as Casella, we've been working with them to get some ballpark pricing on this. Just to show an order of magnitude, to, to run the transfer station after the town buys necessary capital improvements to get the station in better shape than it is now to the tune of like $225,000, which the proposal would be to use a one-time infusion of free cash for that. We would be looking at something just shy of $350,000 a year. Um, right now, the contract with Covanta is much less than that. It's only $110,000 per year. Now, this contract for the transfer station would include personnel from Casella guaranteed to be there at the station watching items go into the hopper, and that's very important because the town is, um, considering moving to pay-as-you-throw, which means the resident goes out to a retail store in our area, purchases special trash bags, and then all the trash goes in those bags. Um, the other option would be to have curbside pickup. And, uh, in the early years especially, that would be very expensive because they, uh, Casella would have to purchase some of its own equipment, and that's a, that's just over $800,000 a year. You can also consider the fact that uh, to run the transfer station now, there are other costs, including our recycling coordinator, electricity, hazardous waste disposal, telephone stickers, and general maintenance. If you add those costs into each one of these scenarios, the transfer station goes to just over $384,000, and the curbside goes over, just over $844,000. This translates to a per bag cost for the pay-as-you-throw of $6.62 roughly for transfer, and a much higher price, $1123 for curbside. Now, neither one of those are final figures. There are elements of the proposal from Casella which I believe have significant room for negotiation. So we would try to get that down. And I think the first thing that the group convened tonight, which are the three selectmen and the three members of the Board of Public Works, need to agree on is whether you have a preference for one uh, solution versus the other solution. Um, and if you do, we would, um, set up a negotiating team with Casella that would probably include the superintendent of Public Works, myself, one selectman, and, and one member of the Board of Public Works. See what kind of headway we can make. So, um, Peter, if you want to entertain some discussion there about generally where people sit with this, uh, what the ideas are before we go any deeper into the discussion.
Yeah, um, Brendan, I just wanted to, uh, make the comment that Casella, I believe, was the only contractor that responded, correct? So we have...
Out of, out of seven, we got two to respond, but after consideration, the smaller firm uh, kind of backed out, and they said, they had a lot of interest in the beginning, but the firm is just not, the company's just not big enough yet.
Yeah. So we're looking at just, uh, one option here as far as contractors go. Does anybody from the, uh, Board of Public Works want to comment on this information?
Yeah, I, I think the, um, from the... I got you.
Bravo.
Excuse me. So Brendan, uh, thank you for assembling these conceptual costs for both curbside and the transfer station. You know, I, I think the, uh, curbside price is, is quite a bit higher than, than modifying the, uh, the transfer station. I think it's in the town's fiscal, um, best interest to, uh, go ahead and, uh, get some money at the November Town Meeting and, uh, move forward with the, um, transfer station alternative with your conceptual budgets that you've obtained from, from various vendors.
Yeah, so the, even the first year of the transfer station would be cheaper than the first year of the pickup including the, the new compactor garage doors fencing and whatever else is needed there, so. You know, it certainly makes a lot of sense. And these numbers are all based on, um, one bag use per household, I believe, right, Brendan?
That's right. We had to make an assumption, and we've never had pay-as-you-throw in Essex.
Yep.
Um, I know that having it in Gloucester, there are plenty of weeks where a moderate-sized family, um, can get away with one bag.
Is there any reasons why we should continue to consider, um, curbside pickup from the board's perspective? Either board's perspective?
Right. So from, from our perspective, I, I believe we, it was our consensus at the last meeting to move forward with the...
Based on the numbers we had then, and this only confirms it.
Which were essentially these numbers, right. So I, I don't see anything to change my mind. And I just add that even, even with the $225,000 or whatever that might be in capital cost, if you think of that, that's really amortized over the useful life of the, of the, of the expenditure, uh, of the assets that you're purchasing. So it's not, it isn't...
It's not a one year, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a one time, but if you amortize it over the useful life, it's, it's, it's not, it's not very expensive. And it doesn't add a lot to the cost.
Right. So does, uh, Board of Public Works have any reasons why we would want to continue to consider curbside?
I, I don't see from a fiscal perspective why it would make sense at this time to continue to consider curbside. I think it's important to note, we are scrambling a little bit here to try and figure out what to do with our garbage. You know, this is not the kind of, um, longer process we would like to be able to do to engage several vendors, to get several prices, to maybe even put it out to a public sort of bid situation, which leaves us in a position where, whether it's curbside or the transfer station, it's a little bit anti-competitive, unfortunately, for us because we only have one price from one person, right? That being said, um, my understanding is that what Casella is proposing to do, specifically at the transfer station with upgrades to the compactor, changing the arrangement, uh, is based on going to what is a more common sort of hauling and dumpster size that should we, three, four, or five years from now, again, be in a position to try and re-procur this? We'll be looking at possibly more people being interested because we have the kind of infrastructure that they can support, right?
So, so I guess what you're saying is nothing we would be doing in terms of the upgrading would preclude us from rebidding this?
Correct.
Going forward, which makes a lot of sense.
I guess what I would say is, you know, as we negotiate this contract, it's going to be important that we negotiate it with our eyes on, that kind of making sure that we are putting ourselves in a good position to have a, 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 a good deal, right? We don't want to sign a 10-year contract right now. We want to sign a two- or three-year contract right now, and then be able to re-procur this in the future and potentially get a better deal, right? Um, we're on, we're, we're unfortunately in a position where we're, we're kind of stuck for time to, to kind of deal with this. That, and it doesn't put us in a great position to get a lot of involvement from a lot of potential.
That disappoints, that disappoints.
Exactly, yeah. So, again, based on the conversations that we've had, it sounds like the upgrades to the transfer station that are being proposed are really pushing it in the direction where it's going to be, um, opening it up to more companies, uh, in the future to potentially bid on this contract, which, which presumably could lower our prices. So, um, from my perspective, uh, right now, the transfer station makes sense. Um, moving forward with upgrades that, that make the transfer station more standardized for, for haulers makes sense. I think it's important to consider how long of a contract we'll be at signing with whoever it is we work with. But other than that, right now, fiscally and, you know, at least for the short term, definitely, the transfer station makes sense.
Brendan, did, has any of the discussions with Casella so far, uh, the, has the term come up, the term of the contract?
Well, they definitely have said that the term will be part of their consideration in the negotiations. Now, um, I would imagine they're going to want at least three years to get a favorable rate. I would say two and a half years because we need to get away from the calendar year system.
Right.
And on to the fiscal year system. So it would be like a, um, half-year system, a half-year contract, and then two full years after that. But again, the negotiation hasn't occurred yet, and we can, we can sit with them and learn more about what they have in mind. The other thing I wanted to point out is that we would hope to go to town meeting with a uh, a cap, if you will. So town meeting will understand that the price per bag, which would be the fee, could not exceed a certain amount. That's important because depending on people's use patterns, if more bags are sold than the current estimate, uh, we end up with less money per, per, uh, less cost per bag. And the Board of Public Works could then adjust the price of the bags as we go through time with this. I just also saw a question flash up about the total number of bags that, uh, total number of transfer station stickers. And I think we have something like 1,200. Gonna move back to my calculations.
These guys are saying just under 1,200, Brendan.
Yeah, that's, that's what I have. So hopefully that answers that person's question, and to get, to arrive at the, uh, cost per bag, we took that number of people, we multiply, um, that by uh, 52 weeks, and you get a certain number of bags in a year, and you divide that into the annual cost that's expected.
So Brendan, one clarifying question on, on, on the, on the process of bringing a conceptual budget that, uh, you've assembled from talking to different vendors, and then assuming we, we get the okay, then, then we open it up to, to other similar type vendors and negotiate a final price with, with, um, several of them to try to, try to, uh, get a favorable price, some competitiveness to the process. Is that, is that the, uh, the approach that you think?
Yeah. Can you get a little closer to the mic? Because I'm having trouble hearing you, Paul. So, I think you said that we still have the ability to talk to other vendors before we get this situated, before Town Meeting?
For a competitive pricing on the, uh, on the, on the transfer station.
So far, we've, uh, we've only had Casella say that they had any interest in it, and they were willing to give us general pricing, which is good because it's helping us to, to understand the basics because our hope is that it only will go down from there, not up. But yes, if we can get other companies interested and we can reach out to them all again, um, and we could actually go to them and say, "Look, we've got a price for this, and it's this much for this aspect and this much for that aspect. Can you beat it? Are you interested in, in serving us, and can you beat that pricing?" And yes, we can, we can try that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Sounds like we're leaning towards, um, not leaning towards, directing.
Well, so there is another sort of question that comes up if you look at the chart. There, there are two within the actual process. Supposing we, we now say that we want to retain the transfer station. There are two ways approaching it financially. One is to is to retain a certain portion of the cost that the line item costs within the budget.
Correct.
And the other is to move all of the costs into the, into the fee. Is that, is that essentially what your chart shows, Brendan?
Yeah, and that was only because right now, you need to realize that, and this wasn't always the case, but right now, transfer station sticker sales actually cover 100% of the cost of operating the transfer station. Personnel, contracts, uh, equipment, et cetera. And so I wanted to show, um, you know, if, if you, um, decided to capture 100% under the new contract, the bag fees would be a little bit higher than if you let some of that go back toward, uh, the general taxation. But the difference is not that sharp, and you would also run the risk of putting uh, more on, on taxation, and at a certain point, you eat too far into the, um, unlevered amount of tax, and there's only so much levy capacity available.
So, in, in your chart, basically, the, the, the line that you'd be looking at, the difference would be between $6.75 would be the per bag cost if, if the 100% of the costs were, were put to the bag fee. And $6.15 would be the bag fee if, if, uh, the line item costs were added to the taxable budget or, or the...
Right.
The town budget.
That's right.
But just to make, make that clear, I mean...
Right, and again, those are max, those are max.
Brendan, then I don't, I don't think we want to put any more stress on the budget itself than we possibly have to.
And another question came up, uh, about the, about the revenue that we can collect. And really, uh, when you have a fee that you're charging for something, it really needs to be very well in line with your actual costs. And, uh, going on the per bag basis and having the ability for the Board of Public Works to adjust the per bag fee as we learn more about the actual use patterns is perfect for that. Um, we're not allowed to come out of this with appreciably more money than it costs to actually operate it, to answer that question.
Thank you, Brendan.
So, so if that's, if that's the consensus of the group, maybe take a minute to determine who, who wants to serve on the negotiating team.
How many people do we need?
I would say one selectman, one Board of Public Works member, the superintendent, and myself.
So I will volunteer myself if neither of the other selectmen want to do it.
You want to do it? Are you okay with it, Ruth?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So I have a lot more questions as well, but I'm not sure if this is the time and the place. Um, Brendan, I have a question about, you know, we're talking about the cost per bag and offsetting it and the transfer station sticker, et cetera. If we're selling somewhere in the vicinity of 1,200 transfer station stickers at $180, well, and I know there's a senior fee and a regular fee, the 180 and the 90, but what would, what would stop us from continuing to collect that same fee and then bringing down the cost per bag fee so that the cost per bag is not so astronomical? and then bringing down the cost per bag fee so that the cost per bag is not so astronomical? So, if we, I don't know the number of senior bags or senior, uh, transfer station tic- stickers to regular stickers. I think you had that number in one of the spreadsheets. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I can try to find it, but it doesn't matter. The point being, that could be a way to, like, the per bag thing, it would be difficult to give a senior discount. But if you did continue with some kind of transfer station sticker, which we're going to need anyway, even if it's free, because you, what you don't need is people buying Essex bags at a retail establishment and then bringing their trash in without us not knowing, uh, without us knowing where they're from.
Right. I don't think that the transfer station sticker should be free. I think that's my point, is we need to offset some of this cost by having the transfer station sticker be some fee that, I don't know, that offsets this cost a little bit.
Right, and you could still do one for seniors and one for non-seniors. And that way, based on what we've sold in the past, you can get an estimate on what sticker revenue would take in. And then the, the difference is what would be picked up on the, uh, per bag fee. And between now and fall town meeting, there'll be a lot of talk about how to structure this, but yes, that is a possible way.
Okay, and then the only other, the only other piece that I wanted to bring up, and again, tell me if this is not the time, but we, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to approve a full-time employee because we, you know, Kavanta left management of the station. And we brought on a full-time employee with the expectation that they would be at the transfer station three days a week and work with the Board of Selectmen for different areas around town two days a week. That didn't happen, but we have another shot at that. Is that something you want to discuss tonight? Or should we talk about that as we go forward when, uh, the structure changes?
I mean, I think we should probably give Mike and the Board of Public Works a chance to talk that over.
Okay.
And then bring it up again. I think we will have opportunity to go over that.
Okay.
Think that works out well.
Yeah, Ruth, I like the idea of some sort of sticker fee to help reduce the bag fee. You know, it's, it's a balancing act to figure out what's a low enough bag fee and a low enough sticker fee. But that's something that can be worked out.
Yeah, I would subsidize the, the, the.
The bags?
Well, subsidize bags, but also the over 65.
Right.
Guy, can you just get a little closer to the microphone? I can't hear the discussion.
It would subsidize our ol- older users if, if we retained a, uh, over 65 fee that was lower than the.
Right, yeah, the regular one, yeah.
I, I think going to bags helps the, um, people who generally have low volumes of trash, whether they be seniors or, or, or single people. Just the notion of buying one bag as opposed to several bags per week. Uh, so I, I think, I think pay per bag lends itself to, to a reduction in cost for, uh, for low-volume users.
Right, and reduction in, in, uh, trash disposal as well, so, I mean, the, the number of bags used may go way down. Who knows, you know? Yeah.
And we, we may be able to sell two-size bags too, and that's all gonna have to work into the calculation.
Good. Well, I think we have a direction, um, and we have a negotiating team in place now, so, uh, is there further discussion?
Uh, who was the Board of Public Works member that's going to participate?
Paul.
Paul is, okay.
Wes is the newest member. Maybe we should assign, not assign. But yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Back to, uh, credit report.
Brendan, can you pick up where you left off?
Okay, for the fall town meeting. What's that, Peter?
Back to your report, can you pick up?
Yes, okay. Um, for the fall ti- you'll see some of the items on the list are highlighted. That's just my, um, shorthand because I am, um, assembling a draft warrant in the background, so they don't, it doesn't mean anything on that. If we go to the very top item, the town bylaws require, um, that town meeting actually set the fee. And the, the hope there is that, um, we can come up with a motion that would say to not exceed X amount per bag and perhaps actually X amount for this size bag and Y amount for that size bag. Once we boil it all down, we've gone through the negotiations. Um, and then there'll be the freedom to adjust the pricing down as we check the use patterns. Now, I think I have. No, I guess it's not on there yet. So, we'll have to have an article for the, um, capital costs as well.
Yeah.
So, I'll take care of that.
There, I, you said there would be three articles for the, uh, the transfer station option?
Yes. So, there'll be the fee, there'll be the capital costs, and there will be a vote to increase the appropriation. Cause right now, we've only got $155,000 appropriated. And so, whether we do it in three separate articles or any type of com- combined format, those three topics have to be handled by town meeting.
Yep.
The fee, the capital costs, and the level of the appropriation, all right? Now, I think we were talking earlier, let's see, about the Economic Development Committee's recommendations. And so you'll see a, um, the second highlighted thing down the page, actually, just below the first one. It says Establishment of Stabilization Fund to Maintain Town Areas That Contribute to Placemaking, like pocket parks, seasonal banners, streetscapes, et cetera. Economic Development Committee would like to, to have that fund established and hopefully some initial money go in there. And they want to talk to the Finance Committee about that, which we'll arrange as we come up on, on that town meeting. The next article would be to make some initial placemaking improvements apart from lighting. So, even though we want to set up this new fund, you wouldn't set up a new fund, fund it, and then appropriate out of it directly. You, if you want to do some things, uh, right away, you'd have another article that would allow you to, um, go after that. And that could perhaps be money for a pocket park that's not being affected by the bridge, for example. Or whatever recommendations and the Economic Development Committee members are presently giving thought to that, of what those would be. Then I have funding to match or augment the grant legislative earmark, which we believe is about 50,000, and private funding, which we might see from Light Up Essex, to get lighting done in one fell swoop. So, if you put all those sources together and you add some money from town meeting, the hope would be to bring in a contractor just one time because the grant plus the legislative earmark are not enough to do the entire area that we want to have lit. So, that's something to consider and basically put four funding sources together to turn out that project all at once. And then, of course, the, um, sale of the surplus, uh, properties in the Robins Island Road neighborhood. So, I don't know that we have to go over anything else right now because we're still a long way out. But I wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about what's coming together for solid waste recycling and what's coming together based on the recommendations of Economic Development Committee because they just came to those conclusions recently. Does the board have any other questions or comments at this time? I can update this list for the next meeting otherwise.
Yeah, Brendan, I have a question on, uh, second-tier bullet two, the Stormwater Bylaw. I'm wondering if there's any, um, timeframe that is required by EPA or the state as far as, um, getting that bylaw in place.
Yes, I think actually most likely it's going to be at, in, by annual town meeting, uh, in May of '23.
Okay, so we can wait until May for that one?
Yes, and I've actually listed it there as well.
Yeah, okay. And let's see.
I guess, uh, Brendan, I, just for, for my sake, for information's sake, I know that, um, I, I believe you're gonna report on the Apple Street project and we've received a letter, uh, concerning that. What is the process by which people who object or who don't want the Apple Street project to proceed in a way that, that, uh, we're currently considering? What's the process for them to bring that before the town? Or to have their, their, uh, other than, other than comments in front of our group and, and so forth and so on? Is there a way in which they can promote an alternative or, or their opposition to the project as, as we're currently looking at it?
Yep, so, they can come before you, you mentioned that. They can come to, if we get into the design and permitting phase, they can come and comment at the public hearings. Um, and certainly, if we get through that and the town is required to put in a certain amount of money if we get to construction, um, that's a topic for town meeting to discuss. Encouragingly, this project is actually eligible, we just found out, for 90-10 funding. So, 90% federal, yeah, and 10% non-federal. And if a lot of that comes from state funds, there's a possibility that, that town funds would be very, in proportionally small.
Right.
Um, ye- yes, we got another letter today and we've had other people, I see Simone is on the line. We've had other people voice the fact that they would like to see alternatives to just elevating the roadway. And if the selectmen feel that you want to look at those further, I have no issue with that. I want to point out that the selectmen have been working through this project via the, um, establishment of grants for three years now. And the next grant that's coming up will be a fourth grant to get through, um, design and permitting. And so, there has been a process followed. I want to make clear that it's not, I don't make that decision. When the selectmen decide to apply for a grant, it, that's just that. It's, we, we don't apply for it unless the selectmen vote and sign off. So, I want to make that clear.
Right.
I don't have a particular, um, outcome in mind beyond what our engineers have told us. And they've said, if you want to make this, um, Apple Street second route accessible when the causeway starts to flood more and more, then roadway elevation is, is really the only thing you can do. If you're not looking for a clear travel path, a high and dry travel path, each and every time there's flooding on the causeway that also gets bad enough that it floods Apple Street, then I suppose you could look at alternatives like having additional equipment available on either side of the flood. Um, other people have indicated that, excuse me. Some people have indicated that they'd like to see more done with the causeway itself. And so far, Mass DOT has indicated they're not, they're not in a position to do that. And that's because it would adversely affect landowners and business owners that flank the causeway. That came into play both when the Route 133 was renovated a number of years ago, reconstructed. And it came into play just recently with the very bridge that's being replaced. And the selectmen went to DOT and said, "Are you sure you can't increase the height of that bridge now?" And they said, "No, because the approach is necessary to get up to that height from a distance away" "would have the same effect."
Right, right. I, I, I get that. I understand that. So, I guess what's curi- a little curious to me is, and you're right, we've been, we've been going forward with these grants basically because they've not involved any cost loss, correct?
Yes, and because it's in, it's in the town's hazard mitigation plan and it's also in the town's municipal vulnerability, vulnerability preparedness plan. Both plans, which were vetted with significant public input. That process unfolded a little while back, but, um, particularly MVP, there was all kinds of outreach and this project rose to the top. So, there was public input involved there. And then since then, there has been kind of the shepherding along of the process by the selectmen. All at public meetings and, and all with, uh, work products established and, and released to the public.
Yeah, there was a lot of professional recommendation for this option and, and the selectmen, um, supported it. And the reason we can go after it, as you're right, is because there is no cost at this point yet. So, we're continuing along that route, but it is a recommended direction that, you know, we may have recommended even if we did have to put a cost in.
Correct. Uh, but, but the interesting thing to me is it, it almost, it seems as though it's possible if we get this, all this additional funding, it might never, this project might never come to any kind of, uh, expression or vote in a town meeting. And personally, I mean, I, I don't, you know, I, I actually, you know, I, I, I agree with, with what the plan is. But I am well aware that there are a number of people who've expressed their opinion that they don't like the plan. And it's not because of cost or things of that nature. And I just want to make sure they have an, uh, an opportunity to express that, their, their opinion in a way, in the best, in the best manner possible.
And as Brendan mentioned, there are several opportunities for that, um, moving forward and post.
Right.
Are we on to Apple Street? I had a que- a, a comment on, back on the, um, town meeting articles, Brendan? You want to sneak that in before we get right into?
Yeah, go ahead.
Also in tier two, the last bullet talks about the Economic Development Budget, Committee's budget. And I'm wondering, that, that's what we're talking about with these pocket parks and seasonal banners and all that. Is that sort of the same article? That's just been updated in tier one? Where they're looking at focusing funding on maintaining and beautifying existing downtown areas? Or is that something totally separate?
Oh, sorry. It goes muted. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. What I said was, that was put on there early on before we had the specific discussions with the Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
And I would say that it, it is the same thing, uh, as, as what I discussed at the outset. And so, that would be, if the, if the board agrees, that would be moved to, to tier one and it's one of the, one of the several that the Economic Development Committee has recommended.
Makes sense.
Makes sense. Anything else on the war, on the draft topics?
I'm good. Ruth?
Sorry, I, I have another point.
I'll revise it and pull it together and talk about it in the next meeting. So, that brings. So that brings us to Apple Street grant funding. We've already had a bit of a discussion on that. But the, the nuance here is that if we eventually move forward with construction funding, which by the way, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency is willing to put on what's called the waiting list, this project that does not commit the town to doing it. What it does is it seals in place the 90-10 funding relationship that I talked about previously. But even if it's on the waiting list, we have to make sure that our Hazard Mitigation Plan stays current. And right now, it doesn't expire until 2024. The people at MIMA said, by the time you get through design and permitting and then you move on to maybe making an application for construction funding, you will probably be almost at the point where your current plan will expire. And they indicated that if the plan expires during an application or even during a project, it spells trouble. So they're recommending, and they have the money for this, 90% funding. It would cost the town at about, about $2,200. 90% funding for getting started right away on the update of the plan, even though it's two years away before the plan expires. It's just good sequencing in their eyes and they have the money at 90% right now. We did this before when we did the original plan. Then we, we did this with the help of MAPC when we did the update. And we would hire MAPC again at a cost of about $22,000. It would cost the town about $2,200. And there's a letter of support that the chairman would sign if the Board wants to get our name and the hat for this funding. I recommend it, but it's up to the Board as to whether you want to vote to get that started.
Yeah, Brendan, that Hazard Mitigation Planning isn't just an Apple Street thing. It's for all hazards.
Correct.
So it covers a lot of, a lot of different things.
And where they're offering, it's been upgraded from 75%, which is what we dealt with the first two times we did the plan, to 90 because we're still in this, in this COVID, COVID emergency phase where FEMA bumped everything up to 90%. And that's how we're actually able to potentially get our construction project at 90% by getting on the waiting list now and if you will, putting a place marker in that 90%.
Is that something we need to do tonight, is to vote for the 90%?
For the Plan Up, for the Plan Update Grant money, yes. Because MIMA is ready to go to the next round of awards very soon.
Any further discussion on that particular item, Ruth? Any comments on?
I have no discussion. I support the decision to, to move forward with that.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to vote to, what, apply for 90% funding for?
Technical assistance to update the, the town's Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. And then there's only one additional topic on my report. At the last meeting, I mentioned that the final report for the Alewife Brook Study, which studied both the potential to help modulate lake levels as well as whether or not migratory fish passage is obstructed at any time. And it appears that it is obstructed, not on the way in, but on the way out. And it was also a review of town water withdrawals from the town wells and how that affects the whole situation. We had given some comments to our consultant at the time of the last meeting. And they've now incorporated all of those comments. And they've developed and released a final report, which I'll put up on the website tomorrow. Unfortunately, it's not very conclusive as to what our next step should be with respect to our next amount of funding. And the state legislature did earmark $30,000 for us to study whatever the next step should be. And I know that Selectman Fippen may want to review the report. It just came out, it just came out, I think, late yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah.
Before we talk further about that.
Makes sense. Thanks, Brendan.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay, so I will go back to reminders. The next Essex Division meeting, Greater Cape Ann Chamber of Commerce will take place Wednesday.
Unmuted.
It was just someone was muting themselves.
No, it was, I muted the wrong box. You're, you're good now.
Okay. So notices, reminders. The next Essex Division meeting of the Greater Cape Ann Chamber of Commerce will take place Wednesday, August 24th, 2022 at 8:00 AM at Rivers Bend. That's what we just discussed an hour or so ago. Essex Police Department Annual Classic Car Show on Sunday, September 11th, 2022, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at Town Hall, the Municipal Lot, the Ball Field and Martin Street. The next regular Board of Selectmen meeting will take place on Monday, September 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Third floor auditorium, Town Hall, 30 Martin Street. Smithsonian Exhibition Lunch, Luncheon Reception is scheduled for Friday, September 23rd, 2022, from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. I will be attending. I don't know if Guy or Ruth you will be. But the Smithsonian Exhibition Luncheon, okay. September 25th, 2022 at 6:00 PM, dedication of the Field of Dreams Ceremony. And the Strategic Planning Committee will hold a public forum regarding its draft update of the Essex Strategic Plan on Thursday, October 6th, both virtually and in person in the Town Hall, third floor auditorium at 7:00 PM. Public comment. We have one letter that I'll read into the record. And then we'll open it up to outside public comment. Dear Chairman Perrine, I'm writing as a resident of Apple Street and as a member of the Essex community concerning the planning, planned elevation of Apple Street near Southern Ave. I have had, I have had an opportunity to look at some of the materials presented by Town Administrator Brendan Zubricky to the Board of Selectmen. This project strikes me as an intense undertaking, both in terms of scope and expense. While I see plenty of information concerning the elevation, elevation project, I have seen scant information concerning alternatives to this project. Indeed, I, the only documentation I've seen regarding alternatives has been a cursory nod in the direction and prompt dismissal. I am concerned that thousands and thousands of dollars have been expended pursuing an idea that will destroy the state-designed, or state-designated scenic byway that is a beautiful and iconic Essex hallmark. And nothing has been expended to explore alternatives that would preserve this asset. That leaves me mystified as to why this project has been allowed to progress to the doorstep of permitting phase with no voice given to Essex residents. I can't help but wonder what other issues confronting the town have received a similar opaque and myopic evaluation without resident input. I understand you to be a fair-minded person who cares deeply about the quality of life in our beautiful town. I hope you will discourage what appears to be an overzealous pursuit of this ill-considered project in favor of a more balanced and restrained approach to solving this issue. Thank you sincerely, Priscilla Meloof. Okay, is there any other comments in-house?
I actually did have a comment and I know someone's coming.
Could you come up to the microphone? State your name.
Yes. Hi, Nina McKinnon, Lowland Farm Road. I guess I'll disclose them on the Finance Committee. I'm not talking on behalf of the Finance Committee. I live off of Apple Street, but I live at the other end of Apple Street. So I guess I wanted to say it's not completely in my backyard. I think Apple Street does represent a sort of Pandora's Box opening. I'll just leave it at that. Within the Finance Committee, this past March of 2022 was the first time I knew of the grant because we had done the transfer, whatever it is, for the town. It was the first time I heard, oh, we might be doing some work on Apple Street. And I've been trying to get involved, obviously, within the town now for over two years. So I think, Peter, what you said was really critical. The town wants to feel they have a voice here. Obviously, not everybody will be satisfied. But right now, if we keep going down the path of the design firm is going to tell us their three choices, I don't trust the design firm because they're going to be putting out what's in their best interests of what they want to build or do. The causeway doesn't help because obviously that has become its own debacle, especially when people say it's still going to flood. So it's kind of creating just this scenario that I think allows an opportunity, maybe in the town, for somehow that real communication. I was hearing, Brendan, obviously, I speak with all of you, that as we get closer to the design phase, as we get to the end, town or community input would be wanted. But we don't want to be giving input when we, a decision might already be made. It's sort of, we want to somehow feel there's still all options on the table to be considered. And from the finance side, it is interesting to think if there was no funding, we wouldn't do it. So there's that little bit where, I know I was hearing the 90-10. I've heard different things with the grant, that maybe the town would be on the hook for 20, 25%. You know, again, a lot of things are still getting ironed out. But it is sort of interesting. It's such a strong street for the whole community. It's not just those of us that live off of Apple. You know, all, people are running it, they're walking it, kids are learning how to ride their bikes, you know, which I think is scary. But I'm just saying, like, everybody uses Apple Street. They use the Loop. It's part of Essex. And to think that, oh, if we don't get a certain amount of funding, then we won't do it, it just kind of goes into that sort of rabbit hole of, are there other options? I know if the, if the causeway floods, we have to obviously protect our citizens. How many times does it flood? How many emergencies have there been? And do we really need to upend a historic scenic street? Spend, it will be millions of dollars, some way spent, for something that might flood, if it's even 10 times a year. And I'm making that number up right now. So I just think it's something for whatever reason, Apple Street, it might just be a symbol, you know, in some ways, for the town to realize that as much public input, whether it's getting it on the town, you know, the library, lettering to let people know if they don't go on Facebook, put it on Facebook, put it on Instagram. But right now, people don't feel they get to have a voice. And hearing they can have a voice when a design has been decided or might be decided makes them maybe feel like it's, I'm too late to come to the game. So I would really appreciate just everyone having that chance to not gonna, not be getting involved, just to make the process not end, but making sure all options are considered. Maybe doing nothing still gives us the best option. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments online?
No, if you want to, it's public comment.
We're doing public.
Hi.
Do you have a comment, public comment? Any public comments on the phone?
There were just a couple of things that were talking about the transfer station, which I mentioned earlier. There's nothing else in the chat.
There is, I believe there is a public comment coming. Yes, state your name, please.
Steve Davis, Lowland Farm Road. Much like Nina was just saying, I was, I just think the town needs to comment more on it. And I don't know if there's a session we can have where we all discuss it, especially the folks who live either on Apple or off of Apple, all the different streets, just to discuss exactly what's going to happen there.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to comment. One of the things I said in the past was that once we get the green light on the grant for design and permitting, we have the grant, we just have to, for their notice to proceed. I wanted our engineering firm to have a public forum that will lay that type of thing out. I'm not opposed to that at all. It's more about, at this point, the Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan having kind of set out the direction in which we should go. And then as Town Administrator, generally, that's what I do. I follow decisions and recommendations that have been made. I don't make those decisions and move toward it. And we've been successful in that regard as far as bringing in money. I'm not sure that it would be done if, if it weren't funded, but there probably would have been more discussion about that as we went. Because of course, there would be Town Meeting votes to spend more money on it. There were some Town Meeting votes anyway about it. Again, I'm, I'm not espousing any particular outcome. I'm just following the plans that have been set out. And if the selectmen decide they want to take another course, that's not an issue for me.
Thanks, Brendan. Any other public comment? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to close the Board of Selectmen meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter.